Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm calling our January Martin County Board of Education meeting to order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pat?
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this night that we can come together to do the business of the school in this county, Lord. We ask for your guidance. We ask that you help us to make the right decisions for our school, for our communities, for our children. Go with us that we may feel your presence with us. For it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
They're properly moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. And now we will go into our recognition.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call up Mr. Brock Wamboldt from the NCAT Center and his guest to come, and Ms. Priscilla Baker.
Right, if you want to read it and then go up there.
Good evening, members of the Martin County School Board of Education. On behalf of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching is my privilege to announce that Priscilla Baker has been selected as a finalist for the NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. This recognition highlights Ms. Baker's exceptional contributions to the teaching profession and her remarkable impact on her students and the community here in Martin County. The Beginning Teacher of the Year Award was established to celebrate the creativity, resilience, and dedication of first-year teachers across North Carolina. Each year, more than 7,000 new educators enter classrooms statewide, and this award honors those who exemplify the best of the professional profession while addressing the unique challenges of beginning teachers. At NCAT, we are committed to advancing teaching as an art and a profession, and we are thrilled to celebrate Ms. Baker as a shining example of this mission. Please join me in congratulating Priscilla Baker on this outstanding achievement. We are pleased to provide her with this certificate. Recognizing you is NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund Beginning Teacher of the Year Finalist. If you don't mind, let's get a picture with the board and everybody. And also, Dr. Williams, if you would, hand Ms. Priscilla Baker that, if you don't mind. We also would like to provide Priscilla Baker $250 from Empower. As y'all know, Empower does the 401K for the state. They generously are giving $250 for each of the 27 finalists, and so we'd like to thank you with $250 cash. We will get you the check, if for real, later, but thank you very much, if you don't mind.
We're gonna let Mr. Wamboldt join to put the phone in.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, way to start off the new year. Yeah, Dr. White, Academic Growth Awards?
Yes. Good evening, board members, special guests, community members. Tonight, we celebrate our schools. Last year, as our social media and website posts declared, Martin County Schools was designated a district on the rise. We had some of the best student achievement data that Martin County Schools has seen in the history of our school system under this accountability model, and the state recognizes that achievement, too. To highlight several things, it was the first time in our school system's history under this model, which has been adopted since 2012, that not one, not two, not some, but all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade schools met or exceeded growth as demonstrated by the North Carolina Accountability System. And so tonight, we want to take a moment to provide our schools with some recognition. The state of North Carolina has actually sent us recognitions for each of our schools outlining that achievement that was publicized earlier this year. So if I could, I'd like to ask Ms. Donna Manning from EJ Hayes Elementary to please come forward. I would like to ask Mr. Wayne Muller from South Creek Elementary to please come forward. Mr. Pake from Jamesville Elementary. Ms. Misty Rushing from Riverside Middle School. Is Dr. Cross in the building tonight? Dr. Cross, please come forward on behalf of Rogers Elementary School. Mr. Howard, please come forward for South Creek Middle School. So tonight, on behalf of the state of North Carolina, we proudly present these Academic Growth Awards to EJ Hayes Elementary School.
For meeting growth standards as measured by the state of North Carolina. While you have transition roles this year, you were the leader of that school last year. South Creek Elementary School, Mr. Wayne Muller, congratulations for your school meeting academic growth standards. Jamesville Elementary School, Mr. Pake, congratulations to Jamesville Elementary School. Ms. Misty Rushing, congratulations. Riverside Middle School, for us also saying had some of the highest data that school has seen historically, green in every category. Dr. Cross, Rogers Elementary School, for meeting growth standards. And also, Mr. Howard, South Creek Middle School, for meeting growth standards. Let's give them a round of applause.
And I do want to designate that EJ Hayes Elementary School was green in every academic area, meaning that when you look at previous year's data compared to last year, they improved in not some, but every single area. Riverside Middle School also green in every academic area, meaning that when you look at where the school performed the previous year as compared to last year, they were improved in every area. And I also want to highlight that as a district, we improved in 27 out of 30 tested areas, which is absolutely unheard of. And that is a testament to the hard work of our school leaders and every single person who is a part of Martin County Schools, from our district team members to every teacher in this district, to every bus driver, teacher assistant, child nutrition worker, custodian, board member, secretary, data manager, every single person in the school system contributed to that growth. And so tonight, I say thank you and I say congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause.
Christmas cards next.
Christmas cards.
Christmas cards.
My guests, Ms. Kennedy Brown and Ms. Lindsey Perry, if she is here, come up and join us. One of our favorite parts of the year is the Superintendent's Christmas Card Contest, and it never fails that we see some of the most amazing talent from our students. That was the case in this year. It was a very difficult choice. I'm glad I didn't have to make it. So we want to congratulate Ms. Kennedy Brown from EJ Hayes Elementary School. She took the top prize in all the elementary submissions. And Ms. Lindsey Perry, she took the top prize for high school. These cards already went out, but we want to just take this opportunity to congratulate you ladies on a job well done.
Let's give Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Lindsey another round of applause. And now more recognition, Ms. Latoya Hayes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Greetings. Thank you for having me tonight. I stand before you tonight from ESS. Tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize some outstanding substitute teachers for their outstanding work they have accomplished throughout the school year. They all go the extra mile to make sure that classrooms are covered daily and that students' needs are met. They are not only dependable, but they are dedicated, they are passionate, resourceful, hard-working, and supportive. Without them, I don't know what I would do. I wish I had clones. Each of you have made a big difference in Martin County Schools. Thank you all for your dedication and willingness to go the extra mile. It is an absolute privilege to have you on my team. Again, thank you so much. On the behalf of ESS, I would like to present each one of you with an award for your hard work and dedication to ESS and Martin County Schools. So first, Ms. Martika Purvis. Erica Blow.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Caroline Bussel.
I'm cloning y'all.
And if Latia Rogers is here. Okay. Again, thank you all so much.
Just so y'all know, I talked to two of these substitutes myself.
And now Ms. Amy Bennett. Data manager recognition.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, good evening. Can the data managers, Lisa, please come up here, please? So we have been transitioning from power school to infinite campus for about the last year and a half. Um, we realized that the data manager role really needed to be streamlined, and we also needed someone to really lead the way. Um, there were some bumps along the way, as with any big transition, and it was very big. Um, this was statewide. Um, there were a few big mountains we had to climb. Um, but the transition has really proven to be very positive for Martin County Schools. The data that is housed in the student information system is clean. It's cleaner than it's been in a long time, if not ever, and it's all due to the hard work of these ladies. Um, they have really busted their tails for this, and it's been really big. Um, Lisa, thank you. I asked Lisa to take on this role as the Student Information Systems Coordinator. Um, her eyes got big for a second, and then she said, "Sounds good," and she jumped right in, and she never looked back. Um, sometimes the amount of stuff we had to do was overwhelming to me. It was a lot. It was a whole lot. Um, but I cannot thank you enough for your leadership in this role. It has been kind of cool to sit outside your office and listen to you talk to each one of these ladies. They all needed different things from you, and you give them what they need. Um, some of them needed to be more handheld, and some of them took off running, but you gave them what they needed, and I appreciate your leadership. For the rest of you ladies, I'm gonna let Lisa say a few things, but I did want to say thank you. Some of you have been here from the beginning, some of you jumped in about midway, and a couple of you just jumped in toward the end. But when we asked you to take on the role, every one of you smiled and said, "Absolutely, we'll do it." Um, thank you. We couldn't be where we are without each one of you, so thank you for that, Lisa.
Uh, so yes, I would not be where I am today without you ladies. Um, I appreciate everything that you give to me every day. Um, I'm always a call away, and I appreciate that you're not afraid to call me or send me an email, because I think that's one of our biggest obstacles to overcome was the open line of communication, and I believe that we have achieved that and achieved that well. Um, I would also like to recognize two ladies who are not here tonight. Um, Ms. Richie Ballmer and Ms. Jane Knox, who retired in December. They were here from the very beginning of this transition, and those two ladies worked hard as well. Um, but again, I appreciate all you ladies, especially Ms. Adams and Ms. Keys. You've been data managers for the longest, and you guys, I call them when I have a question as well. So it goes both ways, and I appreciate each and every one of you as well.
And I do want to step in and say here, um, I was gonna let them do the talking, but I cannot not talk about you. This group right here, you just don't understand what they do for our school system. You know, yes, we have amazing school leaders, but these people right here run our schools. They're on the phone with the parent at the same time a student needs a Band-Aid, at the same time another student is coming up for another reason, at the same time another parent comes in, at the same time a teacher is calling, at the same time an assistant principal needs something. And they do it all with grace and dignity and respect, and they keep our buildings functioning seamlessly. And I just have to take a moment to say thank you. Your work is so valuable, is so important, and we, as a school system, would not be successful without you. And then this year, when we restructured, we needed to restructure in the best interest of our school system and our children, and just get us going in a more seamless direction. And every single one of you said, "Okay, literally, I can do that. I can do that. I can be that for my school," and you've done that every single day. So I just want to say thank you for answering the call. Thank you for being flexible. Thank you for helping us run our schools and give our children the best every single day. You are amazing. Your value cannot be expressed, and I just want you to know how much you mean to Martin County Schools.
I'll start with Lisa Adams. Regina Keys. Angela Adams. April Askew. Ms. Lynn Ray. Marina Thigpen. And Allison Haislip. And Sherri Hansen was not able to be here tonight. Thank you, ladies, so much.
So while this one is not on the agenda, I'm going to ask my board chair to give me a little leeway, because January is School Board Appreciation Month. And tonight, we want to celebrate our school board members, the people on this school board who had answered the call to make decisions, to craft policy, procedures, and structure in the best interest of all children in the entire Martin County community. So tonight, we just wanted to say thank you. We wanted to let you know how much you are appreciated. Over the last several years, this board has been called to make some very critical decisions in order to move our school system forward, in order to give our children even better than what they had previously. And the board has done that, again, with a children's-first mentality, given them the very best every single day. So tonight, school board members, we just wanted to say, take a moment to say thank you. This is not an easy job, but each of you do it with grace, with dignity, and with your best every single day. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Martin County Schools for answering the call to give our children the best. You are loved and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause.
We appreciate it, Dr. White and staff, and it looks like it's something edible, so. And once you get settled, we'll do the superintendent's report.
All right, good evening again. We have so many wonderful things to talk about for the month of December as we celebrate the great things happening in Martin County Schools. First of all, again, congratulations to our amazing board. They've made some fabulous decisions over the last several years that have been a catalyst to that awesome data that you just heard a lot about, a district on the rise. Each and every one of these members is such an amazing contribution to our overall school family, and we're thankful for what they do day in and day out to not only support Martin County Schools, but to support Martin County as a whole and help our community be the best it can be. We also just, during the month of December, we welcomed our newly-elected board members, Mr. Jimbo Shaver and Mr. Chase Connor, re-elected, or Mr. Renee Purvis and Pat Nelson. Again, I want to say thank you for your commitment to serve. We're so excited to have our new members on the board, as well as our re-elected members, and just looking forward to what's to come, because we know the best is yet to come. Also, just wanted to again say a special farewell to Mr. Heath, who served on this board for 28 years, as well as Mr. Harold, who served for 34 years. That is, that represents such tremendous dedication and commitment to the children of Martin County and to the community as a whole. So thank you to those amazing gentlemen for their wonderful service. Want to give another shout-out. Priscilla Baker, a teacher at South Creek Elementary Schools, was named as a finalist for the NCAT Beginning of the Teacher of the Year Award. This is the first time ever in Martin County Schools that one of our teachers has been named as a finalist for the of-the-year award. There's both the NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year Award, as well as the State Teacher of the Year Award. And this is the first time that one of our very own Martin County teachers has been named as a finalist for this award, and they have certainly picked the right candidate. And I feel very confident, when the winner is announced in March, that it will be our very own Priscilla Baker. But if it's not, she is definitely the winner in Martin County's book for what she does for the children of our district every single day. So congratulations to Ms. Baker, and thank you for your service to our school system. We were on the road in the month of December. At the beginning of the year, we started awarding gold stars to our staff members for their excellent service. As you look around tonight and you see folks that have their lanyards on, you'll see some of them have gold stars down their lanyard. Well, when people do amazing things, you want to recognize that amazing accomplishment. So last month, we hit the ground running and went to different schools to celebrate gold star accomplishments. You see represented here on the screen Vanessa Brown Price from Martin County High School, received a gold star for all that she does for the exceptional children within that school. Ms. Baker, this was before we knew that she had been named to a finalist for the Teacher of the Year, the Beginning Teacher of the Year. She was nominated by her principal for the awesome work she does every day. Um, Ms. Haley Benbridge from Williamson Primary School exceeded growth last year with her children. That means that compared to other students across the state, hers grew more than a year's growth. She took her children beyond the standard one-year's growth. Now, to achieve one-year's growth is a celebration, but she exceeded that expectation with her children, as did Ms. Kristen Green, who is at South Creek Elementary now, was at Williamson Primary School the previous year. Ms. Landon Leggett was nominated by Misty Rushing. Um, she is doing a phenomenal job with our innovative middle school program and actually took 80 people on a field trip to New York City, and it was a seamless trip of a lifetime. If that doesn't deserve a gold star, I'm not sure what does, but it was wonderful. Ms. Bernie Best, the cafeteria manager at Williamson Primary School, for the amazing job that she does every single day for our children. And also, Ms. Misty Rushing, again, for, this year we've launched a new program at Riverside Middle School. So number one, the data, the green growth last year, the being better in every category. Number two, launching our innovative middle school. If you've talked to any families in that program, it is simply exceptional, unmatched opportunity, and she has done such an excellent job with that. And she also went on the field trip with those 80 folks to New York City to provide these out-of-the-box, hands-on learning opportunities. So she, too, was awarded a gold star. Be on the lookout, as we will continue this trend in the month of January. We can't wait to recognize these awesome folks at our next board meeting. So many wonderful things going on in Martin County Schools, and we just want to celebrate our people. We have also launched our early college application, as well as our innovative middle school application. We had parent interest meetings that were fabulous turnouts for both the middle and high school during the month of December. The both of those application windows are still available. So if you were interested in applying for our early college, the deadline is this Friday at 11:59 PM. So make sure you get those applications in. Again, this is an unmatched opportunity. Martin Innovative Middle School applications are due by January 24th. We will be holding parent nights this week at Rogers Elementary and next week at Jamesville Elementary. We've already held two previous parent nights to just make parents aware of the opportunity, what's entailed with the Innovative Middle School, and why it truly is an unmatched opportunity for the children of Martin County. Um, we also want to give a shout-out to our band, who had a wonderful holiday concert in the month of December. Thank you also to Matthew Sessoms, who actually knew Santa Claus personally and brought him to the holiday concert to greet the children of Martin County. He even had a special sleigh there. Um, Santa was able to bring Mrs. Claus. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Sessoms for just supporting Martin County Schools and making our holiday concert one that our children will never forget. Thank you for our community partners. You heard me mention that Martin Innovative Middle School took on New York City. I actually attended this field trip as well. We left at 2:30 in the morning on a train headed to New York, and when I tell you it was one of the best experiences ever, I mean that most sincerely. Our children had a wonderful time. They were able to ride the ferry and see the Statue of Liberty. They were able to go past monuments such as Times Square. They were able to physically see things that many of them had only read in books. They, when I tell you we walked across New York City, we walked across New York City. We were looking at the Rockefeller Tree. We were going past the Empire State Building. We went to Chinatown in Little Italy. Our kids lived things that they had only read about in books. It was a phenomenal experience, and we are looking forward to continuing these, and we'll be announcing some new opportunities coming up very soon. But thank you to everybody at Riverside Middle School, Martin Innovative Middle School, all the teachers and staff that spent countless hours making, creating the opportunity for our children. our children. If you talk to anybody in these programs, they will tell you how amazing it has been, and that's because of the hard work of our staff. So thank you. We also did several community outreach projects. We want to be an integral part of our community. We want to give back to our community and make Martin County an even better place because Martin County Schools is in it. So shout out to Ms. Benbridge from WPS, who went into the nursing homes, delivered some goodies, did some Christmas caroling, and just really brightened their day. If you had a chance to check out our social media and see the pictures and video, it was so special to see the excitement on their faces when our children showed up. Also, to Riverside Middle School, who got on a bus and went into the nursing homes as well. These children collected gifts so that every resident would have a Christmas gift. The children collected these, they were wrapped and delivered to them. Just such a special time for our children to give back to Martin County. Huge news and announcement from the Exceptional Children's Department. We have welcomed Milo to our Exceptional Children's Department. Milo is a robot for special needs children. He can help students across many different developmental disabilities, from autism to delays, to intellectual deficits. Milo is an artificial intelligence robot who actually focuses on not only academics, but social skills, which is something that many of these students are struggling with. Training is underway with Milo right now. This has been something that's been in the works for a few years now. This is a huge, huge contribution to our exceptional childrens. Thank you to Dr. Bowen and her team, as well as Ms. Amy Bennett, for continuing to push to bring Milo into the lives of our EC students. More to come on that. Just a few reminders tonight. We do have our request for qualifications. In case you're in the room or in earshot and have not heard, Martin County Schools won a $62 million grant to build a brand-new Martin County High School. And so requests for qualifications are posted. If you are listening and you are an interested party, please visit our website for the details of what you need to submit if you are interested in this project. Questions must be submitted by January 14th, and that deadline is quickly approaching. Our next meeting will be for the Community Coalition. If you have not heard, Martin County Schools has launched a Community Coalition. We are bringing our community together to push our community forward. So Martin County Schools is simply acting as the facilitator, as an instrument, to bring our community together, to tackle tough issues in our community, in order to make Martin County an even better place to live, to work, and to thrive. So we have divided our coalition, decided that we're going to tackle three areas. One of those is social emotional well-being, and we have a committee established to address that. Another is youth programs and some of the need for even more youth programs, and a committee's been established to attack, to tackle that. And the other is parent involvement. What can we do to get our parents more involved in the school system, but across their children's lives in general? And so we have three, we have three committees to attack those three areas, and they've got three action steps that they're going to complete over the next three months. So we're not just talking about it, we're doing something about it. And again, the goal is to make Martin County an even better community to live, to work, and to thrive. If you are interested in being a part of one of these committees and of the coalition as a whole, please reach out to Ms. Sarah Stalls. The information is on all of our social media, as well as our website. If you have not been able to come due to scheduling conflicts, we still would love to have you at the table as we strive to make Martin County Schools the best it could be. You can choose a committee that you are interested in, one of those areas, and you'll serve on that committee for three months, and then you can choose to continue on that committee or tackle one of the other areas that we're addressing. But again, this Community Coalition is about us joining forces from one end of Martin County to the other to make this the best place possible. Also, we've got our important dates here. For our high school students are actually completing exams this week. All that information is on our website, social media. Our application deadline is approaching this Saturday, January 18th, for the early college program. I believe I said Friday earlier, I'm sorry for that misquote, Saturday at 11:59 PM. Our application for the Innovative Middle School is Friday, January 24th, at 11:59 PM. You see, our dates here, we'll be out of school for Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday on January 20th, and followed by two teacher workdays. This is when the high school schedule changes semesters, and so they need that extra time to get everything set up for the new semester. It's like a new school year will start on January 23rd at Martin County High School. So that's one of the reasons for those two back-to-back workdays. Reminder, at our athletic events, we do not allow unsupervised children in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. You must be accompanied by a parent, guardian, or someone that takes full responsibility for you when entering our athletic events. You also are required to stay with that person throughout the events, or you could be asked to leave the facility. We need to keep our kids safe and supervised during all athletic activities. And this is a big one. Last week, Martin County Schools was contacted by the NBC National Nightly News. You see, they had seen a story from our social media about one of our amazing, brand-new teachers named Cassie Garrett. Cassie is a first-year, brand-new teacher, just started at Jamesville Elementary School. But you see, Cassie also just graduated. And the same time she was supposed to graduate, the same day, she was slated to be at her new school, Jamesville Elementary School, which is actually her old school because she served there for 14 years as a teacher assistant. But Cassie did not want to miss the day with students, and so she did not attend her graduation from Gardner-Webb University. But that's okay, because the people at Jamesville got wind of that, and the staff planned a surprise graduation for Ms. Garrett. While she thought she was coming to a Christmas sing-along, she actually found that her family was there. I was there and had the privilege to officially graduate her from Gardner-Webb University and graduate her into the best school family that's out of heaven, Martin County Schools. This was one of the best days of my career. I want to give a special shout out to Jamesville for planning this just amazing opportunity. This is an example of the love between our staff and the amazing things that happen in our schools on a daily basis. And as I said, this story was actually picked up by the NC Nightly News and will air next Saturday, January 18th, at 6:30 PM on the NBC Nightly News. They actually interviewed Ms. Garrett last week, so tune in this Saturday, 6:30 PM on NBC, to see the amazing, amazing story. We're so thankful to have Ms. Cassie. She is such an example of what we want to do in Martin County Schools, of growing our own. She's been with us for many years, but has finally finished, has been working on this teaching degree for so long, and she has completed that and is now able to be a teacher for Martin County Schools. We're so thankful to have her and thankful for the amazing school family that celebrated her on this special day. Tune in this Saturday to see more on the NBC Nightly News. So many wonderful things happening across Martin County Schools. I do want to give a reminder to parents, send your kids to school. We are really going to be focused on attendance in the coming months. Not that we haven't been, but I'm telling you, we're going to have a renewed focus on attendance for Martin County Schools. Children who are not in the classroom cannot learn, and we have to get them in the classroom. So please be sure to get your child to school every day. If they're not in school, then we're going to be calling you to ask why they're not in school. Now, if they're sick, keep them home. Please, keep them home if they're sick. But do not keep them home just because they don't want to school, go to school that day. Do not keep them home just because they missed the bus or overslept. We need our kids in school, and so we want your partnership, we want your cooperation because we love our kids, we want to give them the best, and that requires that they be in that seat every day possible. So attendance, attendance, attendance. Let's get our kids to school so we can give them the best. Chair Purvis, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. White. And remember, Martin offers more. We'll move into our information and action items, starting with Ms. Centura.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to go ahead and start with our January budget amendments. So so far, our adjustments are, for the state, we have an increase of $1,384,021.25. This is a result of the NCDPI adjustments. For local, we have an increase of $30,000. This was to budget for interest earned. Federal, we have an increase of $332,475.3. This is also a result of the NCDPI adjustments, which is new allotments. For our capital outlay, we're seeing an increase of $43,247. This is to appropriate carryover funds for the central office renovations. The renovations weren't complete as of July 1st, when we rolled into the new fiscal year, so we needed to re-appropriate the remaining funds to complete that project. Fund 8, we have an increase by $112,872.36 as a result of grant funds received. This includes a homeless consortium of $5,000, a youth sports grant, $5,000, and FFA add greenhouse for $96,481, and then FFA greenhouse, $12,295 at Riverside Middle School. And these amendments do need board approval.
Okay. Any questions for them? Then can we get a motion to approve the January budget amendments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If properly moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing we have is our quarterly budget report. This is just our spending levels as of January 8th. As it states, state, we've spent 43.61%. Local, 57.3%. Federal, 50.38%. Capital outlay, 39.14%. Our school nutrition is at 47.01%. Fund 8 is at 33.33% overall. We've spent about 46.26% of our budget. This is actually really good. We're in January, we're halfway through the year, so we are on track. This is for your information.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Barber? School nutrition financial update.
Chair Purvis, I do want to share that some of those increases in our budget from the state level were because of our increased enrollment. We are up 127 students, and so in DPI, if you're up more than 100 students in one school year, they are going to add that allotted funds. And because we had such an increase in enrollment, that is-
...million-dollar budget. We are an enterprise fund, and meaning that our revenues must match our expenses. We're supposed to be completely self-supporting and self-sustainable. So in May, I came to our board with some financial concerns that we had, and specifically those financial concerns were increases of cost to board for operational expenses. The two largest operational expenses that we have are going to be your labor and benefits and food and supplies. However, the increases do not stop there. Increases of equipment, equipment repair parts, our software, fuel for facilities, increases generally are basically across our whole, our whole department, did create some financial concern. So in May, I came to you with what we call, what we call a plan for a self-sustaining program. And the importance of having a program that is self-sustaining is because, as you know, after we utilize all fund balance, and that fund balance is gone, it is up to our local board to support the school nutrition program. And we are, we were trying to not get to that point, because as we know, we need every dime that we have to go towards the educational tools to advance our academic achievement for our students. So what we did is we focused, number one, on those two biggest expenses of our program. And, and the first thing that we looked at was decreasing our labor costs, and that's what we've done. So in '22, '23, we went from 36 school nutrition employees, and as we sit right now in this school year, we're operating with 23 school, school nutrition employees. Now, that did not come with terminations. That came when we had some employees retire, resign, and we just chose not to, to fill those positions to alleviate that financial burden that we were experiencing. Excuse me. So the next, the next main change that we made was, was to really tackle our food and supply costs. And as you know, we made some big menu changes. And those menu changes were specifically moving from two entree choices that our students had for, for a while, to one entree choice. And, and what we were trying to do by making that choice was to, number one, decrease food waste, to decrease our food and supply costs, all while maintaining our current participation numbers. Well, that's what we did. We went in and I got, I got our managers together, and we looked at our menu, and we said, okay, what brings our students in the door? What has our students eat with us? And while doing that, we also looked at utilizing our commodity dollars. And for our newborn members, commodity dollars are foods that we receive from the USDA that are no cost to our program. They act strictly as revenue. They do not come out of, out of our school, excuse me, school nutrition budget. So now, I do want to provide you with some financial data and how those changes have affected us so far this school year. And I want to be very clear, right now, we're going to be comparing apples to apples. So all the data that we go through is going to be for, for the first 75 days of operation. So labor, so '23, '24, first 75 days of operation, we spent about $626,000, a little over $626,000 in labor. As we sit this year, first 75 days of operation, our labor costs are at $614,000. So we've saved a little over $12,000. Now, that might not seem like a lot, but recently, our benefits have gone up this year by approximately 500 percent, or $500 per employee. The majority of our employees are full-time employees, and they receive those benefits. So that $12,000 is a, is a pretty good cost savings when you're looking at the increase in costs that, that benefits is costing our program. Our food and supply costs, again, apples to apples, first 75 days of operation, '23, '24, our food and supply costs at that point were $330,000. Right now, '24, '25 school year, we're looking at food and supply costs of $317,000. So we've been able to decrease our food and supply costs by $12,000. I know that seems like a drop in the bucket when you're looking at a $2.6 million budget, but please hold on to that figure for me if you will. I want to bring, bring that back up in the next slide. So let's look at participation. Last year, at this time, 75 days of operation, we had served 74,996 breakfast meals. We had served 139,147 lunch meals. As we sit this school year, we've served 91,000 breakfast meals, and we've served 144,000 lunch meals. Now, as Dr. White said, we've had an increase of 130 students. So we're, we're, I'm not generating that due to our menu, but I do want you to focus on the fact that that cost savings of $12,000, when you factor in that the fact that we've dropped our food costs by $12,000, and we've increased the amount of meals that we've served by, what's that, 21,000 meals? That is a very, very big turn for, financially for our program. The meals that we serve are how we generate our revenue. So if you factor in that $12,000 with the fact that those breakfast meals have generated an extra, extra $45,000 in revenue, and those lunch meals an extra $24,000 in revenue, again, that's a big financial swing for our program. So I do want to look at revenue a little bit more in depth, and this is our revenue as a whole, not just the, the increase in meals, but revenue as, as a whole, based on all the meals that we've served in those first 75 days. '23, '24, we had generated $810,000 in revenue. This school year, '24, '25, we generated $914,000 in revenue. That's an increase of $104,000 in revenue for the first 75 days of operation. So in summary, I like to look at this as, as a business, because that's what we are. Again, we're self-sustaining. We, we have got to be self-supporting. If you factor in our decrease in food costs of $12,000, or decrease in labor costs of $12,000, and an increase in revenue of $104,000, that's a $130,000 swing for our financial program, for our school nutrition department. We are sitting $130,000 better than we were at this point last year. And, and that goes to the fact of that change that we've made. Our school nutrition staff, they're doing more with less in the sense of labor. They were invested, I presented the same information that I did and made to them. They're invested, they knew that we, that we had to make some changes. Our school nutrition managers came in, and they, they generated a menu that is bringing our kids in, and, and you can see that their hard work is paying off. So all the credit goes to those ladies and gentlemen who are in our schools. But as you know, our, our school nutrition program is, is not a money-making business. We are, we're a nonprofit. So we're not in the, we're not in the business of just putting money in the bank. We're in the business of operating at a sustainable measure while improving- We're in the business of operating at a sustainable measure while improving the program for our students. So we're going to look at the data at the end of the school year, and I'm very, very confident that we're going to be back in the black. We're going to be back into a self-sustaining, self-supporting program. So where does that lead us? And so now, we're on, we're going to be looking at a three-year plan, because what we want to do with those funds, that fund balance that we're adding into, into the bank, we're, we're going to make some strategic menu changes. We want to get our kids even more excited to come in and dine with us. Let me give you an example. If we, there's, there's all types of pizza on our bid. A really, really exciting piece of pizza that we could go to would increase our food costs by twenty thousand dollars. That's one entree that we would make one change to. So when I say that we need to make strategic changes, we need to make them gradually, slowly, and strategically, so that we can make sure that we are able to sustain those changes and not just give them to kids and take them away. I hope that makes sense. We're also looking to absorb future increases in operational costs. Boy, let's be honest, prices of things are not going to go down. They're only going to go up. We're at year three and year two of our bid renewals. I do not foresee our distributor renewing our bid this year. I also do not foresee them decreasing the bid that they issue us. So we're looking at a higher bid cost for our food and lay, or for our food and supplies this school year. We want to be able to absorb that in the future without going back into the red. And finally, we want to continue to proactively upgrade our, our facilities. Food, food nutrition equipment is expensive. The parts to repair that is expensive. So right now, what we're looking at is walking the very, very fine line of improving this program while remaining in the sustainable point that we've gotten to and that we will, that we're heading back to at the end of the school year. So board, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about, about the financial analysis that I gave.
Any questions?
Just one.
Yes, ma'am.
Your staff, how are they being able to absorb having fewer workers?
Um, the only thing that I can really explain is just, they come in, they, they get the job done.
They're just doing it.
And, and again, that's why, all, all kudos to those individuals, because it is not, and I've said it multiple times here, it is not easy work, but it is meaningful work. And I was at South Creek Elementary School with Crystal Brown, one of our managers, the other day, and I was there observing, and just the amount of kids that she calls by name. It's, it's a passion. It's a calling. It, it's not just a job of those ladies, so they, they come in and they get the job done and, and it's working.
Thank you for your- Any other questions? Mr. Barber, do our students qualify for free lunch?
Absolutely. Yes, our, our students are still, we're still in the CEP. So, and, and next year, we will qualify for that again. Our students will continue to eat at no charge. As long as that CEP program, the community eligibility provision is, is here and allowed, we will qualify for that.
Okay. Appreciate that update.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that.
Thank you all, board. Good to see everyone.
All right. Dr. White?
Um, yes. Chair Purvis, we, Mr. Kenneth Harrell, an outgoing board member, was our representative on the NERSBA board. As you know, we are asked to have one of our board members actually be a part of the NERSBA board. And so tonight, I'm bringing that request to the board to ask for nominations, to fill the seat of Mr. Kenneth Harrell on the NERSBA board.
Okay. Floor is open.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Jean Scott.
Okay. We have Jean Scott.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate myself.
We have Ms. Abby Mason.
Do we need to move forward tonight? So-
That is the pleasure of the board. We can table it if you prefer, or we can- It's the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Then I will, we'll table this. We have the two nominations. Will you accept, Mr. Jean?
Yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Abby is the self-nomination, so we'll take care of it if you want.
Yeah, I think you asked me a motion to table a couple of the boards. I move that we table a nomination, or as we proceed-
Got a, got a motion to table?
Suck it.
All right. They've properly moved in second. All in favor of tabling, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. All right. So we'll, thank you. Now, we have Attorney McPherson with the North Everett's property.
Last month, we discussed the four options available to the board for the disposal of the North Everett's school property. It was tabled until this month. I'm going to quickly review the four options. If you need me to expound more, let me know, but this is a refresher from last month. The North Everett's school property was declared surplus by the Board of Education. It was passed by the Board of County Commissioners, who said, no, thank you. As a reminder, you guys have to offer any real property to the Board of County Commissioners first. They have to say, no, thank you, before you can dispose of it. We have done that. Now, we're to the point of how do you wish to dispose of this property? The four options are advertisement for sealed bid, the negotiated offer, advertisement and upset bid, public auction, or exchange. And those are the options available to the board as a refresher for those who are not on the board at the time. The last time we sold a piece of property, it was via the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and I will say that actually, the board raised more money that way, from the first offer to the final offer and closing, was several thousand dollars more. So that's the only thing I want to say. Here to answer questions, or for you guys to decide how you would like to move forward.
Any questions before we, I ask for? Okay.
No questions?
No. All right. Then can we get someone to put for your pleasure, as far as advertising, negotiation, you know, exchange, or? Because this, we, we carried it over from the last meeting, so-
Madam Chairman, I move that we go with the last option, which was, name it again, Randy.
Exchange?
The negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid, the thing we did last time?
Yeah, the thing we did last-
Oh, negotiation, the second one.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that. I'm still being asked why are we selling it? Why can't we put the school there? I mean, I'm asking these, being asked these questions.
Basically, I thought you the first time.
Right.
Won't pass.
No. It doesn't perk?
It's also landlocked. It's got a church on one side and cemetery on the other.
Yeah, but it's eight acres.
It's not big enough.
The high school we got right now, Wimson High School, you can, you take the parking lot, the school, the gym, and auditorium, it's seven point two acres.
Yeah, but you got to have some space besides just that.
Yeah, you got a whole another half acre.
Well, what I'm saying is, it doesn't perk, and if the ground doesn't perk, why would we want to put anything there?
And I've been asked, and I brought this to you, Dr. White, when we were at the band, Christmas bands, is if you got the grant for the sixty-two million, what about a grant from the FHA to hook up to the sewer system in Everett's? They say it's a half, it's a half a mile from the stoplight. So I'm just bringing the questions.
The, the other thing, Mr. Stravert, that we got to remember is, is the majority of our students are here. If we move the school to Everett's, we're going to increase our transportation cost. We're going to increase-
As far as what? Gas?
Just transportation cost in general. I mean, think about it. When you drive more, you have a greater cost. So, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have a greater, a greater transportation The, the way that we have it set up right now with the, with this campus here and high school, now you're going to add another ten, fifteen minutes of a bus ride in one direction to get kids here. It, it don't work.
In addition, tying into the sewer system would be another grant application.
Right.
And there are deadlines on this grant. We have a certain amount of time for planning, and we have two years for ground to be broken on our new school. We also know that the county commissioners have made it clear they don't have additional funding to put into the project, so we cannot take a chance of being de facto on sixty-two million dollars while we hope for another grant and don't have the funding to back it up. So in addition to those things, that's why I just don't feel that, that that would be a pertinent option at this time.
And plus, the demolition of the building, which probably got asbestos in it-
Yeah.
-is the cost of getting that removed also.
Astronaut.
So you're looking at spending a whole lot of money that we do not need to spend. And we, as Dr. White said, we own a timeline.
Well, all I'm doing is conveying what I've been asked.
Right, right. And I'm, I'm wondering-
And my-
Yeah. I think that's great you're representing. Right. But I'm wondering, is there something we can do to just go ahead and communicate it some way-
To the public?
Yeah. So we won't have it coming up in February?
Right. You just want to tell the public, we don't want it in Everett, if we want it in Williamson?
No.
I mean, that's just come out and say, I mean, is that what you want? You don't want it in Everett, you want it in Williamson?
I think what we're-
Is that the bottom line?
I think it's economics that's dictating it. It's not what you want, because I'm from the other end of the county.
Oh, I understand that.
And, and, and I understand wanting a central location, but, but when you look at the economics of it, it's not economical for us to put a building there. Plus, you have a tiny little road through there. You'd have to have new roads put in. You'd have to take people's property right away to be able to do that, because it's a narrow little road to have people and buses going in and out of. It's-
It's the same size as nine and three.
No, it's not width of it. No, it doesn't have the same, no, it doesn't have the same.
Okay.
So Ms. McPherson, I'm going to ask you for some advice then. We have a question. I'm just trying to-
So you, you, yes, you have a, you have a motion and a second on the floor. This is debate, and so the next stage after the debate is for you guys to figure what you'd like to do.
Okay.
And so if the debate is over, and I'm not crying to squabble the debate, by the way, but like, that's your logical next step, is to end debate and then call for a vote.
Okay. So I'm going to ask this time for a vote by raising your hand. All those in favor of moving forward with the negotiation option, which was the motion that carried, if you would raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed? Motion carried. If you would take us to, thank you so much.
Yes. So, so next step, just so you guys know, is we will solicit a negotiated price. We have been contacted by certain buyers, and that's the first step, is that negotiated offer, and then we'll have to advertise that. So I will take it from here. I'll report back when there's more to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Madam Chair, I move that the Martin County Board of Education will enter closed session subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to the NC General Statute 143-138.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319, and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to the General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G and NC General Statute 115C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract, proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Have a motion. Can we get a second and go into closed session?
Suck it.
Properly moved in second. All of those in favor of going into closed session, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Closed session.[1457.13]
Move the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carry and now we have public comments and do we have a Mr. Joe Snyder?
Okay.
Mr. Baker.
Yes. Individuals will be given three minutes to make their presentation. Request to speak for a group will be granted five minutes to address the board. Individuals of groups will be called to speak, be called on to speak in the order on the sign up sheet. If an individual is not present or declines to speak, the person on the sign up sheet, the next person on the sign up sheet will be called upon. If the twenty minute period ends during speaker's presentation, the public comment period will end at the conclusion of the time allotted to the presenter. Any materials that the individual or group wishes to present to the board should be submitted prior to the meeting so they can be distributed. The board will not respond to comments except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The superintendent will provide a written response for questions posed to the board within ten working days of the meeting. The board will not hear public comments relating to personnel issues or student issues that are under investigation by the administration. Mr. Snyder.
Good evening. I'm here because Sheriff Manny sent me to talk, so I'm gonna talk. I'm Joe Snyder. I'm a deputy with the Martin County Sheriff's also, also the advisor for Explorer Post nine one one. To give you a brief what Explorer Post is, it's career oriented. It is chartered through the sheriff's office and my group does law enforcement, but you can have any Explorer Post in any program. I brought the program over with me when I came over to the sheriff's office and they've been running it ever since. The Explorer Post has hired three cadets straight out of our Explorer Post into the sheriff's office. We bring them in, we start teaching what law enforcement is, they can participate in ride-alongs, they can do certain duties that we can do and are covered under general statutes and... But the big thing is to tell you that first of all is to thank all the old members. We've been using, as y'all call it, the North Everett's building for the last six years. We started in two thousand nine. We are self-sufficient, so that means all our money is raised by my cadets. Our program is run by the cadets. They vote on everything from what we're gonna spend our money to, on how we're gonna spend it, what we're gonna put it in with trips. We only do two fundraisers a year. One of them was a big carnival that we do. Our second one is we also, we operate, we work...